Call of Wilmer City Council Meeting to order for Monday, May 2nd. Roll call.
Mayor Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Here.
Osmus.
Here.
Butterfield.
Here.
O'Brien. Ask.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Plowman.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
Please stand for the Budget Legion. A Budget Legion.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda as presented?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion does carry. Councilmember O'Brien has an excused absence. Next we have the consent items. City Clerk Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, on tonight's consent agenda for council's approval, we have the City Council minutes of April 18th, special City Council minutes of April 22nd, Wilmer Municipal Utilities Commission minutes of April 25th, Planning Commission minutes of April 6th, Parks and Recreation Board minutes on March 16th, accounts payable report for April 14 through the 22nd, a resolution to approve ASBID budget for airport apron expansion, a resolution to adopt Kanduay County All-Hazard Mitigation Plan, a resolution for the adoption of municipal tort limits, and for council's information, the application for Rice Hospital Board of Wayne Nelson.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the consent items. Discussion. All, a roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next, we have open forum. We have two individuals here to speak from the Raymond Ambulance Service, and we'll start with Deb Brandt. Deb, just advise us as to whether or not you reside within the city of Wilmer or not.
I do not.
Thank you.
My name is-
You have three minutes, and our staff will tell us when your three minutes are up. When you're in the middle of a thought or a sentence, finish that. You don't have to stop immediately, but then when you're done with that sentence or thought, then please pause. Thank you.
Again, my name is Deb Brandt. I live in Raymond. Mayor Calvin, councilmembers are here tonight on behalf of the Raymond Ambulance Service, and you're wondering why? We'll get to that in a minute, and hopefully before I get the hook to be off. So, Raymond has a volunteer EMS ambulance service. We cover approximately 138 square miles of our primary service area, that's a PSA, and then we also have mutual aid agreements with many of our communities. We are in dire need of a new ambulance. Our current two ambulances are over 20 years old. The complete budget of the city of Raymond is almost $380,000, and our service portion of that to run the ambulance service, which we do in the black every year, is about $51,000. A new rig is about $300,000. And part of the reason that we need it is because we have a very dedicated crew who is willing to answer any call that comes out of 15, whether it's within our primary service area or mutual aid calls. What we're doing is we are going out to reach out to every town, every city, and every township that we provide both primary and mutual aid services to. And when we looked at our numbers last year of our 172 calls, which isn't a lot in comparison to what Wilmer has, Raymond had 56 calls, and the city of Wilmer was second with 47 calls, 45 calls. After that was Princeburg Mutual Aid Declar City, Pryam, Blumkist, and then our townships that together were less than 10 per each of our six townships that we serve. So, we are just going out and about because we are here to answer the call. It's about serving people who are in need, and that we want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity, if you would like, to make a donation to keep our service up and running with the latest equipment. The vehicles that we have cannot keep up with the infrastructure, all the new equipment that we have. We have more inverters than we can possibly have on our ambulance, and when we sometimes are driving down the highway, our low voltage light comes on, and we get into the ambulance bay, and we have to sometimes plug in because otherwise it drains the battery of our ambulance. We don't have four-wheel drive. We don't have the safety harnesses in the back. So, when we're working on patients, we can't be tethered in in case we're in an accident. So, there's a lot of things with these 20-year-old rigs. They only have 60,000 miles on them, not a lot, but yet they're not set up to meet the needs that we have and all the ever-changing technology that we have available to help save people's lives. So, again, we are just kind of greasing the skids right now. We just want to get the information out there that we're looking for in rig. We're not making any sort of financial ask, but we do want to give every town, city, and township that we provide services to an opportunity to support a very dedicated group of caring individuals that no matter what time or day or night it is, missing Christmases, birthday parties, we will answer the call.
Mr. Mayor.
So, with that, I thank you.
Thank you very much. I have a couple clarifying questions. So, you said that you do 56 calls in the Raymond area?
56 in, within the Raymond, right around the city limits, and then 45 calls this past year to Wilmer as mutual aid.
Forty-five to Wilmer.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Correct. Thank you.
Next, we have John Citron.
I'm going to get the same thing that I told Ms. Brandt earlier.
Okay. And, yeah, just here, kind of reaching out, same thing. Just breaking it down, like I said, Raymond was about 33% of our calls. Wilmer was next with about 26, and then Princeburg was about 13%. So, you can see we're pretty spread out. Training, everything, Raymond covers. We're willing to, we're willing to serve others. Like Deb said, we're just reaching out, just if people want to give to help us out, that would be great. Same thing she was saying, a new rig, you're looking over 300,000. They're talking two years out right now, and I know just the people we are talking, there's about 20 chassis left of the ambulance we're looking at. So, they're going quick. They're hard to get. We've looked at grants. We've looked at different services that are bigger handing it down ambulances. They're hanging on to them till they're pretty much run to the ground because it's hard to upgrade. Over the past year or two, everything's gone more digital, iPads, everything, so it takes more to power. So, like she said, our rig's just getting a little bit older, just trying to improve, and it will help just service the areas. And, you know, we're willing to, and we're thankful for the help Wilmer gives us, and we're willing to help out back, and just thankful for the people willing to serve and do this job, so.
Thank you very much. I just have one question. So, I think that, so Wilmer Ambulance was run under Rice Hospital originally.
Yep.
And then it went to Caris.
Yep.
So, let's go back 10 years. Are there about seven years ago? How many mutual aid runs did you do to Wilmer like seven years ago, would you think approximately?
Probably under 10.
Okay.
It was mainly just if Wilmer was very swamped.
Okay.
But I could look back and try and find the numbers. I know just switching from digital to, from paper to digital, it's a lot of digging.
Sure. I think it'd be interesting for me to know if there's a substantial change after, after the Rice Hospital was leased to Caris Health, if there, if we saw a change at that point, so.
And we can work with them to try and get numbers back and forth, and like I said, we're just getting out now to get on front and give information.
Does the council have any questions, any clarifying questions, or I just had those couple of questions. Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
I do have a question. So.
Councilmember Osmus.
Who owns the Wilmer ambulance then?
So, we used to, the city of Wilmer used to own it, but when the lease happened, then that was given to Caris.
So, New London Spicer's ambulances, what are all those other communities doing?
Most ambulance services from, I understand, the towns, you know, there's a fire board for fire. There isn't that for ambulance. Some are privately owned by cities. Some are, like Caris Health owns, I'm not even sure how many, but through hospitals, different thing. We're a city-owned ambulance. So, it's the city's cost going into repairs, equipment, all the upkeep on training.
So, you're different from Atwater, Princeburg, all the rest of the communities in Kanduay County?
Not every community has an ambulance service, like Princeburg are first responders, so we each have PSAs or the primary service areas. So, like, our ambulance covers the town of Princeburg. They are first responders. They can't transport. Atwater, I believe, New London, Lake Lilian, and Sunburg are primarily city-owned, just like Raymond, okay?
What I think what the difference here is, is that, from what I'm hearing, these numbers are kind of, they're kind of blowing me away, to be honest with you.
And we, we are a community that has two ambulances, and so we can still leave one back in Raymond, and that's why we get a lot of mutual aid calls to Wilmer then.
So, it'd be interesting to find out, Ms. Valiant, maybe we can find out how many mutual aid calls New London, Atwater, Sunburg, and Lake Lilian have made to Wilmer as well. Because if we've seen a dramatic increase in that, I mean, we're talking huge increases here. I mean, almost five times. If, if we're seeing that, that to me is a red flag against the mayor of Wilmer, as far as service, you know, because that PSA is worth millions of dollars, and we gave that to Caris at no charge, so. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have considered public hearing for Midwest Technology Campus abatement request. Ms. Valiant.
Good afternoon, council. So, tonight, we are asking that the council pass a motion to set the Min- Midwest Technology Campus Abatement Public Hearing for May 16, 2022. Last meeting, Justice Walker presented the, Midwest Campus had requested to apply for a 10-year property tax abatement for, in 2015, for eight parcels. This request is for an additional three parcels, and all the financial information, and that will be presented at the public hearing. And also President Jim Sevan will be presenting also, along with Joanna Schrupp, the general manager, on the request for the abatement. And you'll hear that then all at, on the public hearing information. So, this is just to set the public hearing for May 16, 2022.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to set a public hearing for the Midwest Technology Campus abatement request for May 16, 2022. Discussion. All those in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion does carry. Next, we have consideration of approval of Doughty addition preliminary plat. Ms. Valiant.
Yes. So, this is a preliminary plat for the Doughty addition. This is just a replating. They actually are splitting up a parcel, one parcel at 1400 Grace Avenue Southwest. And the, the issue that comes, arises with this replating is that it actually is just slightly under our minimum square footage of 8,500 square feet. Each lot comes in at 8,371, so it's about 99% at our minimum square footage requirements. The Planning Commission is at this time also reviewing lot size requirements, and they are potentially going to be requesting that a re, that the zoning requirements be reduced to help increase density and lower the cost of purchases and building of a house on lots. So, right now, the resolution that I, I think was missed in your packet, we have consideration for this preliminary plat. We are requesting that part of the resolution be that the council recommend that since the Planning Commission hasn't finished the process of rezoning or the recommendation of lot sizes, that that be part of the resolution, and that they could either, if the lot size of the ordinance changes before the final plat is approved, then there's no issue with it. But if there, if that has not been done, then they can request a variance for the lot size to be at 8,371. So, as far as the resolution, it, the fire chief and engineer comments shall be met and adhere to additional information applied to, requested by the engineer, shall use all applicable state and local federal rules and regulations at all times, and that then we would also have that the contingent, the variance needs or the amended zoning requirements have been met for the 8,000, the, less than the 8,500 square feet.
I'm making up her motion to approve, considering that the lots meet current zoning, and if not, it'll have to get a conditional use permit.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. Just a question. I did drive by the property after I read the Planning Commission minutes, but was there a public hearing regarding this, or does it not?
It doesn't, doesn't meet that public hearing because it's just one lot, and so it, it doesn't meet that because of the square footage of it too. It doesn't meet that public hearing requirement. It's a minor subdivision.
Okay.
Which doesn't meet that public hearing requirement.
I, I was just curious because there's a fence all the way around it, so it was hard to perceive that it was being divided into two, and just wondering if there are odd lots behind it, if the neighbors had been informed, so.
Additional comments or questions? Roll call.
Councilmember Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes as well. Next is consideration of a pool heater replacement at the Dorothy Olson Aquatics Center and to enter an agreement with Bulletproof Mechanical Services.
Good evening, mayor and council. I apologize for my hacking over there. I've been getting over the bug, so I'm sorry about that. But the City of Public Works Department is recommending the adoption of the resolution to approve entering into an agreement with Bulletproof Mechanical Services, Inc., for the replacement of the pool heater at the DOAC for the amount of $48,036. This pool heater failed on us last summer, and it was much more than we anticipated to replace it, and the current placement of the heater is in a poor position based on where we add chemicals for leveling the pool balances, and it gets a lot of corrosion. So, we're going to be relocating that heater in a different spot, and hopefully we'll get a little more longer life out of our pool heater because we're going to get it away from those chemicals. So, I'd stand for any questions.
What's the warranty on this one?
Um, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head what the warranty is.
I want to take a motion to consider this.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded. Continue with the question.
Um, yeah, I, it's usually whatever the standard, you know, there's usually a standard warranty with industrial applied utilities like that. I am, um.
Seven years.
Pardon me?
Seven years.
Is that what it is?
On the bottom of page two, seven-year heating exchange or warranty, and one year on all other parts.
Oh, yeah. There you go. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yep.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, do they have to order it, or do they have one on hand, or will it be ready?
Well, let me just tell you, explain, we've been working on this for a while, and we've had to re-quote this twice because the price just keeps going up. And so, I just talked to him last week before we put the car report in. I said, just check your price, and it changed $3,000 from, I don't know, it was like a month and a half before that. But no, he guarantees it, and they'll have it, so.
It'll be installed by?
Well, as soon as we get the word to go, I've already talked to him that once he gets approved, we're got to get it rolling.
And the pool opens when?
Well, usually they try to get it going by the first week of June.
Do you think it'll be 70 by then?
Just for FYI, we really didn't have the pool heater at all last summer, and honestly, we did get a handful of people complaining a little bit, but it wasn't, wasn't as bad as I thought it would be, unless Rob had more than that, but.
Yeah, I only had a couple phone calls about it.
Yeah.
I had a few on it too.
Pardon me?
I had a few on it too.
Yeah. It's just one of those things that was a big price tag. You know, we thought we could just repair it, and the whole thing was just corroded and just basically fell apart as we started looking at it, so.
I know that when the YMCA had a similar issue happen with their building, and they went to the new pool heater, the money they saved in natural gas paid for that pool heater in a matter of a couple of years.
Yeah.
I think it was like three years.
Yeah, we're actually going to move this out of this particular spot where it's at now, and we should take it away from a lot of the corrosion that you get from the acid pucks and stuff that they add to the pool. So, highly corrosive stuff there.
Additional comments or questions? So, we have a motion that's made and seconded to approve an agreement with Bulletproof Mechanical to replace the pool heater at Dorothy Olson Aquatics Center. Roll call.
Councilmember Butterfield.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next, we have a consideration to reallocate the funds, purchase of 2022 Chevrolet pickup for the Park and Rec Department. Mr. Maung Gardner, our Park and Rec Director.
Mayor, member of the council, when we formed our Park and Rec Department, we inherited a truck from Community Ed and Rec. It was the 1998 Ford F-150. You might have seen it around town. It's the park truck that we've had and everything. Well, it's time to replace it. And when we were in our CIP for a vehicle replacement plan, they, Gary from the Public Works Department, had $37,000 left over on, on a project that didn't happen. So, we're talking as a committee that we should be able to replace that truck with the, we're doing more with the Park and Rec with helping out, with hauling equipment, doing ball fields, painting soccer fields and everything like that, so this vehicle helps us out with that. So, the motion tonight will be to adopt a resolution to reallocate $37,000 from the Public Works Vehicle Replacement Program and $1,579 from the 2022 Thermal Imaging Camera Capital Project Plan for the purchase of a 2022 Chevrolet truck in the amount of $38,579.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve a purchase of a Silverado, Chevy Silverado pickup. Where's this vehicle going to be purchased from?
We got two quotes. We actually, from Atwater, ordered from Schweeters, and we'll be getting it from Schweeters.
Okay. Additional, additional questions from council? Roll call.
Councilmember Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes as well. Next is the consideration of a Public Works Director position. So, first item would be to consider updating the job description. Ms. Valiant, our city administrator.
Yes, council. In front of you is the updated Public Works Director, taking out the title of the city engineer also is what the recommendation is. And so, with that, anything that would reflect the engineering department has been deleted from this and updated, and we would like you to approve this new Public Works job description as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the updated job description for the Public Works Director, removing references to city engineer tasks and responsibilities. Motion made and seconded, council, discussion. I noticed that the pay classification goes from a 13 to a 19.
Yes.
That's just to come into conformity with our new pay plan, correct?
Well, the Public Works Director was part of, well, the supervisor was the pay grade for the night, 13, and it moves out of that supervisor position to the director position, so, yes.
Okay.
Yes and yes.
Additional questions from council? So, staff is recommending that we do this. We have a motion that's been seconded, so all in favor of the motion to update the job description as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion does carry. Next is an action to approve the appointment of the interim Public Works Director to the permanent Public Works Director. Ms. Valiant.
Yes. Mr. Gary Manzer has been our Public Works Director for, since May of last year, so it's almost been a year, and working out of class policy actually is supposed to be only about 60 consecutive days, but we've been fortunate that he's allowed us to keep his talents for the last year in being our Public Works Director. So, I would like to have the approval to move Gary Manzer as our permanent Public Works Director because he's doing such a great job for us, too.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve Gary Manzer as our Public Works Director. Discussion. Well, as far as the mayor's concerned, when we originally talked about doing this, I had a lot of reservations and a lot of concerns. All of those reservations and, and concerns have just gone by the wayside. I think with the team that we've established, I think we are doing excellent work. I have noticed the improvement of morale at the City Hall particularly, because that's generally where I'm at. So, when I stop in there, I really see a good cohesive work team. I see a good team that they communicate well together on needs and wants, those types of things. I've had numerous comments from council members that have called me and said, I had an issue that came up, and I called Mr. Manzer, and he took care of it right away, or Mr. Manzer is working on this issue for me. And so, I know the council has, has numerous, more than I can count, times just really appreciated the work that you've done, Gary. So, so I think that this is a really a good move, and I think it's the right move for the city, moving us forward with a new administrative plan on how we handle our administration. So, I think this is an excellent plan.
And also an update. Today, our RFP went out for our software system, so our ERP is called, so Enterprise Resource Management, so. So, we will see those come in from vendors over the next few weeks. At the end of May, we'll start to reevaluate their proposals and see where we go with that. So, hopefully in the year from now, you'll be able to see a workflow system type go out also for our Public Works. We're permitting everything, so we're excited to get that started.
Perfect. So, motion made and seconded to approve Mr. Manzer as our, our Public Works Director. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that ma, that motion does carry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that update on the software as well. Next, we have a consideration of a formation of a mayor's housing task force. I have received numerous comments over the last probably year and a half that single-family housing in Wilmer is basically non-existent. I asked Ms. Valiant to pull up the report that was supplied to council, I believe, around the first of the year, and last year we had seven single-family homes built in the city of Wilmer. We've done a good job with multifamily housing, and so a number of people have contacted me that they would like to see a task force put together, and so I'm requesting that the council allow the mayor to set forth a mayor, mayor's housing task force. The thought of this is that it would work in collaboration with Division 2040 Housing and also the EDC's Housing Work Groups. And we've had a number of people since the article in the paper on Saturday that have contacted me. I think I've had five or six or seven people contact me today expressing interest and wanting to serve. And so, I would like permission from the council to form a mayor's housing task force. I would view this as being fairly short-lived, probably less than three months, with recommendations then coming back to the council for the council to consider. And then also, those same supporting documents would be presented to the Vision 2040 Housing Work Group and also to the EDC's Housing Work and also to the EDC's Housing Work Group. And so, so I'm looking forward to getting that established. Councilmember O'Brien has been in my ear the most of anybody, I'll have to say. I wouldn't say daily, but I would say at least probably two or three times a week in regards to this, probably over the last two months. And so I have recommended, or I'm requesting that Council Brian, Councilmember O'Brien be added to that task force as well. And so I would look for a motion to establish that mayor's task force on housing.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, discussion. Councilmember Butterfield.
Are we going to have any general contractors in on this task force?
Ms. Valiant, maybe you can talk a little bit about what we're looking at, what we're thinking about, but there will be. So I'll let Ms. Valiant go first and then I'll fill in any holes there.
Certainly, we're looking at general contractors, we would like to, excuse me, along with businesses also. I've talked to Jennie O., and they already serve on the Vision Twenty Forty. And they're happy to serve on ours also, so they'll be coming to this meeting too. United Community Foundation also is very interested and has some really great insights into some of that. So Sarah Carlson has also accepted at this time that she would join in on that. And then Tiffany, who sits with the UCAP also, we'll be asking her to join us too. And various, you know, we're looking for citizens also that would sit on it. So businesses, contractors, it's very important.
Then we're also looking for realtors as well. We'd like to have one or two realtors serve as well, simply because they're hearing what people are telling them when they're going out looking at housing. And so there's a lot of realtors that have been talking to me about it over the last year, about the lack of housing, single-family home housing. Additional comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor, how big do you want this task force to be?
Originally, we're thinking fifteen to sixteen. Fifteen to sixteen, it might end up expanding a little bit above that, just simply with the amount of interest that we've had up to this point already. But our goal would be to have it fifteen to sixteen so it's manageable. But also then so that if we want to break it off and have a group look at some specific housing pieces, that they could do a subset of that and then go look at those housing pieces. One of the thoughts on that would be, is there something we can do with, with Rockstep? And is there a work group that would want to take a look at what could happen at Rockstep? And see what could happen at the mall for housing as well. So that is just an example, not that that will happen. That's just an example.
All right, thank you.
Additional comments or questions? Okay. So looking for two, two, one, two more council members that might be interested in serving on that. And so to, we can't have a quorum, so with the mayor, we can have three additional council members serve. So if there's somebody else that wishes to serve, we could entertain that in the same motion. Or we could come back and talk about that at a later time. I would also like the council to bring names back to the next, bring the names to Ms. Valiant, and then she will work on assembling those names. And then we would establish it, we would bring back those names for all of you so you know who the players are, who the people that are going to be in that task force. Councilmember Ask.
I'd be willing to serve on that task force.
I would be willing to serve.
Councilmember Osmas. So Councilmember O'Brien, Councilmember Ask, and Councilmember Osmas, along with the mayor.
I'd be an alternate.
An alternate? Okay, and then Tom Butterfield is an alternate.
So if. Put that in the motion.
Could you put that in the motion, revise it?
Sure, I just did.
Okay. That's not substantial, is it? Because it was in the original motion to have, we're just putting names to it and then we're adding an alternate?
Yes, mayor, that's fine.
Okay. All in favor of the motion as amended to include councilmembers O'Brien, Ask, Osmas, and an alternate of Butterfield, along with the mayor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion does carry. Any council members have anything good for the good of the order? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, mayor, I'd just like to remind everybody that the filing for openings is May seventeenth. Just a reminder.
What's the closing date?
Sure.
Totally forgot about it. But we're going to have Public Works Open House on the Thursday. I think it's the May nineteenth, I'm not sure, let me just. Yes, Thursday, May nineteenth, out at the Public Works Garage. We get all our equipment out there and open for families and kids. And we've had it for a few years and it seems to be a big hit, so we're hoping for good weather. And we'll usually find some treats to serve as well, so just wanted to get that out there. Starts at about four-thirty, goes till when everybody leaves, usually around six-thirty or so.
Okay, sounds good. Councilmember Osmas asked me to announce the mayor's per breakfast. The mayor's per breakfast is this Thursday at six-thirty at the conference center, for those that would be interested in that as well. With that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, made in seconded, we are adjourned.